Twenty-fourth regular meeting of Board of Education. Uh, call reading to order and request table call please.
Mr. Newmaw?
Here.
Ms. Kalnowski, here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Barrow?
Here.
President McCollum?
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members have been given dense copies of the minutes from our previous meetings of January sixth and twenty-seventh. Uh, without any changes, I request a motion to approve the work.
Second.
Ms. Kalnowski. Ms. Newmaw, roll call please.
Ms. Kalnowski, yes. Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Barrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. Now, to tonight's agenda, any additions or corrections? Uh, with no additions or corrections, can I have a motion to approve the present agenda, please? Second. Mr. Bush?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kalnowski, roll call please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalnowski, yes. Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Vice President Barrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. Communications to the board, Mr. Sawyers.
Thank you, President McCollum. Board of Education members, we have the honor this evening of actually starting our Board of Education meeting um, with the receipt of a donation um, to our school district, um, compliments of the New Albany Community Foundation and some generous benefactors um, within our community at large. Martin and Lynn Redgrave, as well as Patty and Yarmus Steiner, um, are here this evening. And Martin's here on behalf of the foundation with Marcy Gabor, um, the vice president from Albany Community Foundation. Um, we have some students, as you're aware, within our school district that often look for financial support to participate in a wide variety of activities across our school district. And this is outside the scope of pay to participate. So you may recall, as a board, you've approved um, an extended learning opportunity for our students who participate every other school year, and a marine biology trip to Andros Island um, as an extended summer learning opportunity for course credit. But at the same time, this year it's in partnership with Granville Exempted um, School District. Um, the two marine biology courses are being united. So it's a collaboration between Granville schools and New Albany Plain local schools. Um, and through the course of interactions with Mr. Kramer and Dr. Hamilton and the teachers, we discovered that a few families have faced some financial turmoil um, that was unexpected and needed some additional financial support to get them to the point where the kids could still participate without losing the extended learning opportunity through marine biology. So when these things happen, we are fortunate as a community to have New Albany Community Foundation that we can turn to, um, but then have partners um, like the Redgraves and the Steiners that believe in our environmental education, educational extended learning opportunities that a kid may never have an opportunity to participate in. Um, in some cases, could be an extended learning opportunity the first time. So tonight, um, we are accepting on the Board of Education agenda, a five thousand eight hundred dollar donation that will benefit three students to participate in the Andros Island marine biology trip this summer um, in order to support them and their families based upon demonstrated financial need. So I'd like to welcome um, Marcy Gabor from the foundation, as well as um, Martin Redgrave, um, one of the persons that kindly brought his family foundation, um, trust at the foundation, um, are donating towards our students in our school district to accept the check. So I would like the Board of Education, um, you're gonna participate in a photo opportunity, please, um, to accept the check that's later in the agenda. So we're gonna pretend that you're going to say yes, um, because it's not yet in the agenda, um, and accept the check on behalf of our students in our school district.
Um, behalf of the foundation and our generous donors, I'm going to present this check. The photo opportunity.
Um, thank you, Board of Education members, for participating in that opportunity with the foundation. And as always, we're very grateful for all the generosity that our community demonstrates towards our community on a daily basis. Um, my last reminder is we're plus or minus a month away from spring recess. Um, the weather is cooperating, fortunately. Um, we're hopeful that spring recess will be upon us very quickly. We're starting to see um, faculty, staff, and students that would welcome the opportunity to have spring break arrive. Um, but please remember, there's a lot of learning that takes place between now and spring break because as soon as we come back, and we actually talked about this this morning with Dr. Malias earlier this afternoon, we're back in school after spring break, we're here for school days, and state assessments begin. So the next month is crunch time, so I know people are um, starting to feel the need for spring recess, um, both from administrative, faculty, staff, teacher perspective. However, the next month matters, um, because it's critical to final instructional elements that are necessary before state assessment's beginning at the high school level. Um, so that planning is underway, but for families at home, please remember, um, it is not the last day of school. There's a lot of learning that still needs to take place. We still have a lot to still accomplish to meet the goals um, within our school district. And every single day matters in the instructional elements for demonstrating that learning. So I know you need spring break, but we're still a month away. I need you to continue to work each and every day and do your best to ultimately help us achieve um, the levels of achievement that we know we are capable of as a school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next to the board update, please.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Caroline Ellis, and I've got a few updates. Uh, the first one is Annie Stedman, senior English students culminated their unit of study on George Orwell's Nineteen Eighty-Four with the Jefferson Series speakers of Newt Gingrich and Valerie Jarrett. Students were able to expand their knowledge by formulating questions for the speakers. The second item is the reading intervention specialist, Margaret Duracop. Lisa Harrison, Karen Kent, and Carrie Nasco attended a one-day professional training entitled Level Literacy Intervention Refresher. This, of course, reinforces all the skills that they need for the students that they work with um, for reading and writing behaviors. And for the third year in a row, Mrs. Lichtman and Mrs. Cook took their fifth graders, and they performed at the Columbus Blue Jackets game on Friday, February seventh. Ninety students were in attendance for this pre-game concert, and they did an outstanding job.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Uh, now to discussion, I don't think more than a number of books.
I think we just mentioned, as has been published, that uh, city council has agreed to work with us relative to new uh, civilians, gazebo, outdoor learning centers that will be uh, immediately adjacent to Roadrun Park and to the theater. So really, I believe that city council and nears holding assistance in helping to fund. A portion of that, they're gonna be providing a two hundred ten thousand dollar grant, plus a forty thousand dollar EEP uh, grant to help offset the costs. So I think it's really a great uh, coordination and communication with the uh, part of our community where they, they further connect in, I think it'll work out going forward.
Any other reports? Okay. And yeah, we're really excited about that. I think we're taking action uh, on those generous gifts that are in the uh, so. Um, thanks, everyone, on this board and all for your efforts and working with the city to make that happen. Uh, next, our continuous improvement plan progress update, Sawyers.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Malias back to the podium. As we indicated last month at the board meeting, tonight would be the secondary focus um, based upon available data from mid-year report out on CIP benchmark number one for academic progress. Dr. Malias?
Good evening. So I was spending time looking at continuous improvement plan in regards to some of our secondary data. When I reported out in January, um, the high school had not quite finished all of their assessments. And since um, our conversation in January, the eighth graders also took the PSAT. So when we look at benchmark one, we're increasing the district performance index on the level report card from seventeen to sixteen. The high school staff have been working at grade level and course level, um, teacher-based teams. These teams have been working through the five steps of collecting data, analyzing student work, establish shared expectations, implement changes based on the student work, and progress monitor students. The English ten teachers administered a common assessment based on released OST questions in November. The teacher-based teams were able, were then able to use the item analysis based on the standards to specific areas for additional instructions. So this is, um, the tenth grade teachers gave this common assessment in performance matters. Um, and this is part of the item analysis that they can use um, as they analyze those results. So each question is linked to a standard. And then from there, it looks at the percentage of students that either got the question right or did not. And so you can see in the two areas that are more red, that those are definitely areas that are part of their teacher-based teams that were able to target and to move forward and to help support their students. Also, back in the fall, um, I met with the government teachers to review last year's OST's data, individual te- teacher item analysis and value item reports. The team identified areas that needed support, and I'm happy to share that ninety-seven percent of the students passed the government and of course exam in December. This is a three-point percent increase over last year. In addition, forty-five percent of our students that took the government test in December earned the advanced, the highest performance level, and this is a seven-point increase over last fall. Benchmark two, facilitated year or more of growth for every year of instruction. In the high school, algebra one and geometry students take the math assessment in the fall and the winter. The math assessments are content-aligned, and they are not grade levels like three through eight. So they take an algebra one assessment to take a geometry assessment. It's better aligned to the content that they're being taught. The projected growth for seventh-grade students is four point one. And as you can see, seventh graders had an average growth of seven point seven, substantially above the national norm for growth from fall to winter. Eighth graders, um, the national norm is a three point six from fall to winter, and our eighth graders had a seven-point gain. Ninth graders have a typical two point three. And our ninth graders in algebra, when we talk about just the algebra one, have a six point eight. And tenth graders, you'll notice the national norm keeps going down, is one point nine, and our geometry students had a five point two. Projections are not made for eleventh graders, there's not enough students across the nation to take that, so we don't have any norming for eleventh graders still. The middle school admin team has identified individual students and provided additional support through an additional math intervention. The high school has a similar model where students can earn elective credit through their intervention learning center in algebra one and geometry. In both cases, math teachers are providing targeted instruction based on student information from math data, Alex progress, and classroom assessments. Benchmark three is to meet or exceed the state's gap closing. The gap closing component shows how well districts and schools are meeting the performance expectations for all students, especially for our most vulnerable populations of students, in English, language, arts, math, and graduation, and how well our English learners are becoming proficient in English. We are actually in the middle of our Oloka Window, which is Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment, where all of our English language learners take uh, four poor tests, speaking, listening, reading, and writing, to assess where they are in their English acquisition. Middle school, um, Principal LeBeau worked with teachers and counselors to identify students during the summer and added them specifically to ELA, math, and executive functioning um, study centers. Um, students receiving English support have been using Achieve Three Thousand as a target intervention to help with reading. Students saw an average lack style, which is a measure of the difficulty of text, increased by forty. In addition, students in the English support had an average RIT increase of six point three. In the high school, high school educational assistants, intervention specialists, and English learner teachers have been also using Achieve Three Thousand with um, over eighty students. Um, the high school admin team has identified students that work with the educational assistants prior to the beginning of the school year. And for the first semester at the high school, the students that um, used Achieve Three Thousand had an lack style gain of over seventy. At the all buildings, there is ongoing conversations about meeting the individual student needs. Each building has a multi-tier system of support team that continues to have conversations around individual students and ways that we can better meet the needs of all students. Benchmark four is looking at college and pre-readiness. For the first time, the PSAT was inserted to eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. The PSAT is administered in four sections, reading, writing, math with a calculator, and math without a calculator. The writing section is not essay, but has a focus of command of the English language. So while it's a writing section, they're not physically writing. Each section is then disaggregated by subscores. These score reports offered to both students and teachers provides a snapshot of students tracking towards college readiness benchmarks. There are seven subscores that include words in context, command of evidence, expression of videos, just to name a few. These subscores allow students and staff to target areas of strength and areas of improvement. Within the college board site, teachers and students are able to see their specific questions and how the student at school did compared to the state and national norm. Across all levels of the PSAT, there is a common scoring. So an eighth-grade student earned a thousand, then if that same student took the SAT on the same day, college boards would say they would also earn a thousand. Since students in the eighth, ninth grade do not have the opportunity to learn all the content that's on the SAT, the top score of the PSAT eight-nine is lowered. With increased content knowledge, students should expect to see growth in their PSAT scores over the four years of the taken exam. The vertical alignment will allow staff to monitor students' growth towards the college readiness benchmarks. So this is an example of one of the reports that um, teachers can use. It shows um, the school averages, the district, the state, and then the comparison to the total. This is, this uh, report is actually for ninth graders. And what it does is it breaks it down into the number of students and the percent of students that earned what's called a college readiness benchmark, which says if they earn this score, they have a probability of seventy-five percent of earning a C or higher in their first college credit-bearing course. So one of the things I want to point out is that for our ninth graders, we had eighty-three percent of our students that met the English reading and EBRW, evidence-based reading and writing, and um, a seventy-nine percent for math. When you compare those to the national averages, we're looking at a fifty-seven and a thirty-eight. Are, we are doing substantially better than the national norms in meeting those college readiness benchmarks. That PSAT eight-nine is normed specifically with eighth and ninth graders. So the scaling on the scores were on track for college readiness were adjusted. Um, as I, as I just stated, a typical student will increase PSAT scores as they learn additional content. So the, on the left are eighth graders, and on the right are ninth graders. And as you can see, the eighth graders took it in January, um, ninth graders take it in the fall. And you can see that there is an increased score, which is the expectation because of that increase in content. The national percentage of eighth-grade students being on track in both math and EBRW, as I just stated, um, is substantially higher. We're about forty percent higher um, than the national norm for meeting those college readiness benchmarks in the eighth grade. During our professional development day last week, a representative from college board worked with high school teachers to unpack the PSAT reporting and work towards understanding how this information can be used within the classroom um, to identify areas of strengths and areas of improvement um, for individual and groups of students. So then these are our tenth and our eleventh grade scores. And as you can see, again, those scores are going up. Um, tenth and eleventh grade students take the PSAT NMSQT. Again, the scores are normed specifically for the grade levels. And those college readiness benchmarks are, um, you can see they change based upon the grades. Um, with the vertical alignment of the PSAT assessments, um, students will have a greater understanding of how they are tracking towards college readiness. And this will also um, allow our teachers to force students um, to work towards that college readiness. In January, Mark Yoho um, from college board facilitated a parent meeting to help parents and students understand their PSAT scores and resources available through them through the college board, including a free personalized path on Khan Academy, opportunity scholarships, and career exploration through Road Trip Nation. Teachers have participated in professional development to better understand the resources and reporting some for instruction. And I went really fast, so if there's any questions or comments, I'll take them out.
A couple things. So in terms of uh, having exceeded the state performance and national norms, do we have specific targets other than what our benchmark is in our CIP? Do we have specific targets for some of those numbers to see if we're beating our own targets?
We've looked at the S's. Well, we've, in, in the past, our CIP has been made on ACT. And we'll do our, our baseline this year for SAT, um, with juniors taking it in April. Um, since this is our first year of doing PSAT in eight and nine, um, I think it, I don't necessarily have goals set right now, but it is definitely conversations. When we talked with our professional development last week, um, with English teachers for a couple of hours, and then we had math teachers for a couple of hours, kind of digging in to the data and saying, what can we do to help support students move up? Um, more students meeting that college readiness and what areas, if a student may have met college readiness, which one of those subscores, maybe it was the, the passport to advanced math, what can we do to help support students, individual students, or and or groups of students? So I wouldn't say we have a target um, for PSAT. Um, we're mostly looking at those benchmarks for SAT as we have in the past for ACT.
Yeah, I had a question regarding the uh, SAT as well, but um, this on benchmark four?
Yep.
Where you said we, where it's clear that we exceeded the uh, the state average of, which I would expect. So my first question was really, have we exceeded, do we have specific targets to know whether we met or exceeded our own targets of this particular measure?
So for this one, this, we're ninth grade. And since this is our first year for ninth grade, I would say we could, that's, that's a conversation as we move forward, since we don't have any ninth grade data prior to this year.
Okay.
So just because we're establishing baseline data, do we have any data for other comparison school districts? Arlington, Dublin, as example, or like Angie, that we can compare our data with against theirs, given the fact that it's baseline years for us?
So PSAT scores are typically not published.
Right. So we'd have to get them from them?
Correct.
And have, and have we asked, and are any of them willing to share?
Have not.
So that's something we could do, because it's a baseline year. At least, we could look at other high achieving school districts um, for comparison purposes to see if they'll give us their data, because PSAT will not give it to us clearly, but the school district may in this aggregate.
Do we know how many schools are doing the PSAT ninth grade? Because there are thirteen, purely fourteen thousand ninth graders in the state that took the test. That's not the number of ninth graders in the state. So are we, I was curious, who, who else is doing this? And whether or not that actually makes our numbers look a little better?
So ninth grade, it's, I would say ninety-nine percent of your juniors are taking the PSAT NMSQT. Um, you'll see a greater percentage for tenth grade. It does start to, as you can see, um, it gets scaled way back for ninth grade and eighth grade. So in the local area, I can tell you that Dublin gives it to all eighth graders. It is optional for ninth. Indiana gives it to, it's optional for ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And those two are mandatory. Um, so as you can see, those numbers definitely go down um, before eighth and ninth grade. It's mostly an optional test in some of the other districts.
So sticking with this, one of the reasons I've, I've asked whether we had our own targets and how we're doing with respect to that is I would expect New Albany to consistently exceed the state average for a whole bunch of reasons. So whether we're stretching ourselves within our own community is, is a different question. So I understand if this is the first year, so be it, then I'd like to make sure that we do establish our own targets, you know, stretch targets for the coming year based on the data we gather this year.
And one's nice, too, is that our eighth graders this year took the game really. So we actually have information about our current eighth graders. So now we can start that conversation with um, Principal LeBeau has already had started those conversations with eighth grade, eighth grade teachers about how we can use that. And then the next part is looking at our freshman teachers as they help support them into the fall. So it's def- this vertical, we're in that first year of really trying to establish that vertical alignment through the SAT suite of assessments.
And then on the SAT in particular, or PSAT and SAT, um, I'm sure you know, I've already had numerous conversations with Superintendent Sawyers regarding using some of that, using that data for a couple of things, to help more of our students make it to national merit finalist, national merit scholar, um, to use what the information we get. So that's on the PSAT, that sets them up for that. And then to use the information on the PSAT to really target individual students to help them improve their scores on the SAT, because both of those two things have a huge impact on, on college opportunities for students. So having hard data and hard targets and specific plans to, you know, to use this information to move kids along is incredibly valuable and will produce results.
Yeah, I, these are ongoing conversations um, that we've been having at the high school, um, looking at um, the Khan Academy, um, in particular for all of our juniors, because they got the results in December, pushing them into Khan Academy to help those personalized paths, because that gives them the four months prior to them sitting for the SAT. Um, research, uh, college boards, um, I can't remember the exact numbers, I should have them. Um, based on the number of hours that you put in Khan, there was an average of sixty, I think it's between sixty and a hundred, depending on the number of hours you put into Khan Academy, that your score can increase. So it is definitely an opportunity that um, students can take advantage of.
Right, so can take advantage. There are things we can do, active things we can do. So if a parent is receiving a specific letter that says, here's how your child did on the PSAT, spending this much time would be demonstrated to, you know, on average to show X increase in the score. So, you know, having that sort of personalized letter about their child, I don't know if we do that, but that sort of thing is pretty powerful, I would think. You know, I know I would use it. You know, if I had got something like that, I know that would be a useful thing. I just don't know if that's something that's part of the strategy.
So I might ask Principal Graham to come up here to help um, speak exactly to what the high school has done. What we have pushed, we have um, shared the information about Khan Academy. PSAT scores did go home, so parents have those. Um, but I'll, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so what Dr. Malias is talking about, that Steve Center for the High School's done at this point um, for pushing that, those score reports out to, to families. Um, again, a new process for us this year, and um, we have new data. We just had training with our teachers um, this past February eighteenth um, about ways in which they can incorporate this data into their classroom and into their construction. Um, so it's an ongoing process for us and a learning curve. But I do agree, having a specific score report for your child to say X amount of hours in Khan Academy would show this type of increase definitely would be powerful. And if that's possible, that's something we'll look into. Yeah, I was wondering if there's a way, I mean, we all, we all have had students, one way or another, going through and, you know, Alex, the big math thing, and um, which I love. I do, I love Alex. But uh, not everyone, I know.
You might get hurt, Lee, in the middle.
I know. But, you know, could there be some requirement that we, I don't know, I mean, I'm just talking here. Could there be some requirement for juniors to say, hey, you have to put in, you know, as part of whatever class, X amount of time on Khan Academy, because we want to see your scores improve? I mean, we do it with, we do it with the kids in math, why can't we do it to help improve their ACT scores? Just a thought.
Yeah, so again, that, that sort of active and personal intervention or information to a parent is far more valuable than simply, you know, here's your child's score, and you can take advantage of Khan Academy. Right? But something that's, that's much more specific, says, you know, X amount of time has been shown to increase, you know, scores by ten percent or five percent or whatever the heck. You know, just something that's general enough that passes muster, because it's accurate, but isn't so, you know, so specific that you're, you're making a promise to somebody, right?
So there was a push of the parent meeting that specifically happened, that Dr. Malias referenced. I will be honest and tell you, attendance is not what we wanted it to be. Um, some parents didn't feel they needed to be at that specific setting. But those that were there were walked through those different protocols that could enhance your child's ability to improve his or her score. Um, it probably still is an opportunity that we can figure out um, to go back to and reinforce with the parents. I don't know that we can require it. To your point, Mr. McCollum, I mean, Phil and I had that conversation in a variety of different ways, um, going around the conversation related to the requirement. And it's not a board requirement, it's not a district requirement. I can't tie it specifically to one academic class because of what's actually represented on the assessment, both from English Language Arts perspective and from the evidence piece and then mathematics. So um, we can talk about that, but I think right now it's a recommendation. I can't tell you it's a mandate.
Fair enough. I, I would just say, uh, as a parent, it's one thing for me to say to my children, hey, you should really, you should really spend some time on hey, you should really, you should really spend some time on Khan Academy. It's another thing if they're strongly encouraged by, yes.
And, and another thing entirely, if there's something behind it. So my daughter's currently prepping for a standardized test. And, you know, there's data to support that if she spends a hundred hours in preparation, doing sample tests and doing some of these things, that, that on average, those students that spend a hundred hours doing this preparation increase their scores by X. And, you know, so she's able to look at that and, and make a thoughtful decision about whether it's worth the time. She's an adult at this point, so it's her call. But, you know, that sort of individualized feedback allows much more rational decision making. And even at the high school level, whereas the parent's doing some of this, still, you know, a kid can see some, you know, you do this and this is a likely outcome. It's more powerful than just this general thing of, you know, use these resources. That's really the point I'm trying to make.
I would maybe just add to that, and it's not necessarily just the standardized test, the SAT or PSAT. But I, at sixth grade level, when we talked a few weeks ago about sixth grade and some of the standardized testing's come back and some of the improvements that I know are being worked on. I was here, anecdotal again, and Eagle period has been replaced with time to work specifically on matters that, that individual test scores that will identify as things to work on. So it could be something I dismiss as a parent, but again, to that point of the, the parents being able to get involved to understand that, you know, my student has got X categories of subject matter that they're working on, give us an opportunity or other parents across the district to help that student understand that, yes, it's better to go do that to improve your, your math and your English scores in this particular subject matter. If you do your homework later, Eagle period, it's nice, but that's another reason to use that very specific curriculum time. So again, I think the commonality is whatever additional detail in those communications can come back to help parents and students understand specific actions and wide matters. I think it'll be helpful to achieving sixth grade level.
If this might be crazy, but would it be possible to offer like an elective that is SAT prep?
There is a course, but in terms of participation and student requests, I don't know if there's a question.
Yes. So there, there is that, there is that.
I actually think it's been canceled the last three years sitting here. I mean, we can pull the data, but it's been offered as a semester-based course that students do not register for. And part of it is the logic when you talk to the kids, I can do this in a different way outside of the school day. They don't have to tie up a period in my schedule every day for fifteen weeks. So I can do this before school, after school, online, and I don't have to do this as a daily class because I don't want to find another semester class to put it with.
Fair.
I, I just had a question about the written portion of the assessment. So I thought I heard you say it, the PSAT, PSAT written portion is significantly different from the SAT written portion.
No, it's not an essay-based. So there's actually, you can do the SAT, Evidence-Based Reading and Writing, Math, and then you can do an add-on writing portion and it's an essay. Just any of the writing subscores that you get on the PSAT is not from an essay. It's called Language and Context, and it's like looking at your grammar, looking at structure. So it's different, but they still give you a writing score, but it's not from a physical essay.
So the PSAT doesn't really prepare you that way for the SAT?
The SAT as well does not have a writing base unless you pay for the additional writing portion.
And why would a student take the writing portion?
It's all dependent upon the university or college that they're applying to. Like when you look at OU, it has a requirement of the SAT, the Evidence-Based Reading and Writing and Math. But if you look at the Scripps School of Journalism, it actually requires the writing portion as a part of their application process. So it's dependent upon the school and the, the college within.
Your academic major.
Okay.
Other questions from Mr. Kramer or Dr. Mias? Thank you both. Thank you.
We have an opportunity for public participation. And with that one, we'll move on to treasurer's items. So if I have a motion on treasurer's items, A and B. Kalanowski, second. Mr. Bush, Mr. Jenkins.
Financial report for both revenue and expenses, our variances continue at the same level that we've been discussing the last couple of months. Revenue, we will start to collect real estate property taxes for porch path collection likely in March into April. So we'll definitely monitor that to see if we're seeing any of that Google income. And then at what point can we push to make sure that all of those parcels are put together and valued where they need to be valued? So we'll watch that. And then on the expense variance side, again, we're at about the same level as we were last month with the majority of the variance in personnel and retirement benefits, which is where we would want to see those variances because those are compounding and they really have a much bigger impact on the higher forecast. And then you'll also see capital outlay is another major. We're about $238,000 under budget there. That's basically from money that we've transferred into permit improvements. So we're recoding and then classing some of those purchases there. Then the other item that you see is accept amended amount and rates. So the Franklin County Auditor sets the rates that they apply to businesses and residential properties. They set them actually in March of 2019 to collect in twenty. And they had, the one difference that you would see if you looked back at that approval was that the bond was set at six point five mils, which was down one and a quarter mils from the year before. These amended rates put it back up to seven point five mils. So it's still down a quarter of a mil from the previous year, but it's not the six point five that they had set it at. I really don't have much of an explanation from them. My guess is that they always ask us for what our balances are. And if the balance isn't as high as they think it should be in that, that service fund, they will increase or decrease the mileage based on that. But it's just one of those things that we get to approve.
Roll call please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Numoff?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes.
Now to superintendent's items, but I have a motion on eight, A through C. Mr. Darrow?
Second.
Second, Mr. Numoff.
Mr. Sawyers? Thank you, President McClellan. Board of Education members, eight A are the personnel action items recommended for this evening. There's standard employee action items pursuant to a higher vice code, personnel changes that are happening within our school district to accept persons that we're hiring and or resignations from employment, including volunteers in our school district for spring sports. Letter B this evening for general business items, there's a couple that I'll specifically point to. So the first, because it's something that's very unusual for us, the city of New Albany, based upon our support for the building of the amphitheater, has approached the school district for, number two, for the approval of a non-disturbance and estoppel agreement for real estate purposes to describe and affirm the current conditions of the lease and the relationships of the landlord and the tenant pursuant to part of their funding structure. So there's some state funding they're actually receiving. So it's a requirement for the city to verify that they have an estoppel agreement in place. It's gone through legal counsel because when Becky and I first received it, received it in the school district, we weren't convinced it was necessary because of the terms and conditions of our lease being so specific. Legal looked at it. It's just a formality to help the city to affirm the fact that there's specific funding that's going to flow through to the amphitheater. So legal counsel does recommend that we affirm it and move forward through board action in preparation for the city. So it's a safeguard ultimately in real estate to affirm that our current lease is the lease. There is no other lease but one lease, and that is the lease, in my words, because that's what it is.
I'm unclear. Is that the lease? One lease?
Yeah, we question, why is this necessary? But it's funny. Number three is the approval of the partnership agreement with Kenyon College. And this is a standard requirement pursuant to higher vice code to continue offering college credit plus opportunities for our students at New Albany High School. So we do approve the specific colleges that we partner with. And number four, as Mr. Numoff had alluded to during his board liaison report for the city, tonight I am recommending the formal approval of the two, of construction, the two outdoor learning spaces or community shelters or pavilions or whatever we end up calling them when we work this out. For right now, I'm calling them outdoor learning shelters and community shelters for approval for construction. We will work that out with the city as part of our partnership. But it is to construct the two outdoor learning centers, shelters that'll be available at the primary, intermediate school and middle school playgrounds as part of the playground refurbishment and construction that'll happen this summer. It's approximately $438,000 for the two structures, the concrete, the furnishings, the benches, the park and all that stuff, concrete work that has to happen. We're approving up to a half a million dollars in the event we run into additional costs related to drainage or other once we disturb the playground space. So as Mr. Numoff had alluded to, $40,000 will be donated at the March city council meeting from AEP. And then that will come to the school district to formally accept as a donation. And the $210,000 we have invoiced the city for, we have not received it. So when we do receive it, it'll appear for action through the board under donation or receivable to the school district. And then letter C this evening, as always, we're very thankful for the generosity of our community in supporting all the different types of programs, both learning and other that happen across our school campus. So those are the generous donations that have been received to the school district in the last month. I'll be answering any questions you may have.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Numoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes.
Public participation with none, then I will ask for a motion to enter into executive session. We need to meet the seat in the purpose of considering the evaluation of public employees or officials. Second, Darrow, Mr. Bush, roll call please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Numoff?
Yes.
President McClellan?
Yes.
We are adjourned. There will be no action taken, so no need to stick around.
We are adjourned.
During the executive session. During the executive session.